...in 551.071 respectively. Thank you all for being here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Second, thank you. All in favor of the agenda, please raise your right hand.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Board approved unanimously. Thank you very much.
I'm distracted by the kids.
We love these kids. Look how great they look. So we've got the pledge.
I'm doing the pledge. Okay, please stand for the pledge.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. I'm sorry I got distracted by y'all's beautiful faces. My goodness, y'all look great. Thank you for being here. Dr. Christarfen, what's going on?
Oh, well, oops. Mr. President, trustees of the board, we have one recognition tonight. It is regarding the month of January and January's connection to the School Board Appreciation Month in Texas. Our thanks to the students and staff of the Clifton Center for making delicious treats for you tonight and for providing the gorgeous ferns, the plants that you received last week. So thanks again to them for doing all of that hard work and showing us their beautiful products as well. Now, tonight in your honor, the Palm Elementary Choir, led by Nathaniel Binion, will provide three strong songs for you. "Yellow," "In Austin," and "Don't Be Afraid." So we'd like for you to sit back, relax, and enjoy the gorgeous music by this talented and especially adorable group of students. And we just want to thank every member of the choir for participating. And your choir teacher is welcome to introduce anyone else before or after the presentation. So thank you for coming out tonight, and we really appreciate you serenading our board this evening. So welcome.
Thank you. And I don't know if there's any other parents or staff members who want to take pictures, but feel free to get to the side and if you feel that just make yourself at home.
Thank you for having us. We have a gift for you from our choir. We have a T-shirt that all of you can share and maybe take turns wearing it from Palm Music Experience, and we'd like to give it to you as our present to you. We want to say thank you. We know that you do a lot of work for us as students and us as faculty at our elementary. We're very excited to present to you tonight three songs. Our first song is by Aram and Giovanni, and we're going to sing "Yellow."
I heard that song performed at Austin City Limits this year. Was that y'all that did that?
Yeah, all of us.
Man, that was great.
Yeah, we got rid of our English accents just for tonight. The second song we're going to do is in honor of, we're doing an anti-bullying week this weekend. Some of our students wrote a poem last semester on bullying, and so we got together, three girls, and they're in the choir tonight, and we wrote a song for it. It's called "Don't Be Afraid." And so it's not completed because we're going to finish it. Look here, guys. We're going to finish it, and so "Don't Be Afraid." Don't be afraid. Don't be afraid. Don't be afraid. Don't be afraid. Don't let 'em do it. Don't let 'em do it. Don't let those people bring you down.
As you walk across the hallway, feeling bullied every day.
Doesn't mean your life is over. We have something else to say. One, two, three, four.
You are so beautiful. Let the flowers bloom, fill up the room. You're beautiful. You are so beautiful. Let the flowers bloom, fill up the room. You're beautiful. Don't be afraid.
Don't be afraid. Don't be afraid. Don't be afraid. Don't let 'em do it. Don't let 'em do it. Don't let those people bring you down.
As you walk across the hallway, feeling bullied every day.
Doesn't mean your life is over. We have something else to say. One, two, three, four.
You are so beautiful. Let the flowers bloom, fill up the room. You're beautiful. You are so beautiful. Let the flowers bloom, fill up the room. You're beautiful. Don't be afraid.
That was awesome.
Thank you all so much for sharing your evening with us, and we want to say one last time that it's our honor and we want to thank you for all that you do on a consistent basis. And our last song is called "In Austin." Last year, a singer-songwriter here in town, Tim Basham, he's also a writer here in town, wrote a song called "In Austin" and did it with our choir. This year, he's just finished his recording project with some really, really great artists. And he first did it with our choir, and it's about our city. And we didn't think it would be any more appropriate than to sing a song about Austin to thank you for what you do for AIST. So thank you so much. Thanks again.
There's a city called New York, New York. It's an ice, they say they named it twice, named it twice. Won't know what it means, I hear. You walk down that swinging street in your knees. They invite me out each year, but I think I'll stay right here.
In Austin. In Austin. In Austin.
From Big Bend out in the west. The city's north and south and east and all the rest. Turn up your radio and find that joyful, peaceful Texas state of mind. But I can hardly wait to get back to the star of this whole state.
In Austin. In Austin.
Could've thought I'd find my good sign right beneath my feet. No one holds me like you've held me.
There's an old man here. And he knows my name. And he plays my song for me.
You can't know the joy it brings till you step down into the cool of Bud Springs. In Austin.
Could've thought I'd find my good sign right beneath my feet.
No one holds me like you've held me.
There's an old man here.
And he knows my name.
And he plays my song for me.
You can't know the joy it brings till you step down into the cool of Bud Springs.
Thank you. Palm Music Experience. Thanks to all of you, and not that all the adults weren't, but thank you, kids. Y'all were spectacular. Thanks for being here tonight. Come back anytime. All right, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Williams, there were a couple of soloists. Can we have the names of the two soloists?
Yes. Uh, Aram.
Aram, could you go ahead over here to this microphone right in the middle? We want to see your face and hear your voice.
Again?
Yeah, the wonderful voice.
I'm Aram Keshaki.
Thank you. You did a great job.
I'm Giovanni Arroyo.
Thank you. You were wonderful as well. And did you mention there were a couple of them that had written a song that part of this?
Vanessa and Kristen.
Where are you two that helped write that song? Please come up here and let us meet you as well. We love all of you. Just want to meet the ones that were called out. Go ahead.
Kristen Contreras.
Hi, Kristen.
Vanessa Trubiate.
Vanessa, thank you. Thanks to each of you for being here tonight. There's probably other places you could have been, but we couldn't be happier that you're with us tonight. So thank you very much. And I don't know if there's family members or staff, but just thanks for everybody for supporting these wonderful children, and thanks to you for helping put this together tonight. So one more big round of applause for this tape. And y'all are welcome to stay as long as you want, but if I was you, I'd get out of here. There's things to do tonight, but thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Y'all look great. And the community T-shirts coming our way. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks a lot. Rock, paper, scissors for first. Let me get it a little bit up, a little bit, see if I got something to weigh it down on. Oh my gosh, that's gonna be bad.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, are you done? Time for us?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move to public hearing. Before we do, I got a little announcement that I would like to make. I know there's a lot of stuff going on, but our fellow trustee, Sam Guzman, was elected this past weekend, president-elect of the Mexican-American School Board Members Association. And this 41-year-old organization held its annual state conference this past week in San Antonio, and Sam was unanimously elected president-elect of that organization. Sam, congratulations. Okay, thank you all for being here. Let us get to the public hearing.
Yep.
And we'll, you ready? You want to just go straight to the hearing, or you got to open remarks?
I have a little open remark, but you want to go ahead?
Well, I've got, you want to go ahead and I'll do the public hearing?
So, Mr. President, trustees, tonight you're scheduled to take action on the authorization of expenditures for the remaining funds of the 2008 bond program. Our staff estimates that there will be approximately $19.4 million in remaining funds after the projects approved by the voters in 2008 were completed, are completed. The administration is recommending that an estimated $10.7 million of these funds be used for critical renovations to major buildings, building systems, and infrastructure. These expenditures would involve about 34 schools and one support facility. The administration also recommended that $5.4 million be used for facility renovations required in four of the six annual academic facilities, recommendations that the board approved in December. I just like to be sure that it is clear, I know that in some of the reporting it was misprinted, and I just wanted to be sure that people knew that we would vote today on using the resources for the AAFRs, and we are asking you to consider whether to spend $5.4 million in contingency funds on the 2012 AAFRs and $10.7 million on other critical maintenance projects, because the documentation said that we were spending all $16 million on the AAFRs, and that is not true. So it's a split, it's $5.4 for the AAFRs and $10.7 million for other projects across the district that are not AAFR-related. So just to make sure that everyone's clear about that. And so, Mr. Williams, I just want to turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with the public hearing, and this will be on the 2008 bond contingency program fund utilization. And this is the time we'll dedicate to public comments related to the 2008 contingency fund program utilization. And under the open meetings law and the rules of this board, there will not be a dialogue between the person at the microphone and the dais, but we'll be taking notes. And people have the opportunity to sign the blue comment sign-up card, and we'll be calling people up in groups of three, so you can anticipate your term. Each person will be allotted two minutes of time. As you come to the microphone, there's a light, a device that will light up as you move through your two minutes of allotted time. And when the buzzer sounds, please take the opportunity to wrap up your comments so we can move on to the next person. Each person who has signed up can have the opportunity to address the board. And a Spanish-language translator is providing for audience members who need translation assistance when understanding, when addressing trustees or needs assistance during understanding comments made to trustees during the public hearing. And if you need this service during other portions of the meeting, please speak with the interpreter. And Irma Gomez, welcome, as her communications specialist, and she'll repeat this message in Spanish.
Buenas noches, Presidente Williams, Mesa Directiva, y Doctora Christarfen. Soy Irma Gomez, prestando servicios de interpretación a las personas que deseen presentar sus comentarios ante ustedes esta noche durante la audiencia. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll call them in groups of three. So thank you all for being here this evening. Cynthia Valdez, Geneva Oliva, and Vincent Tovar.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cynthia Valdez. I'm here today, I'm representing LULAC, League of United Latin American Citizens. Today, you are being advised that it is within the scope of the leftover 2008 bond package for you as AIST school board members to allow spending, an estimated $5.4 million, to the AAFRs recently approved by you in December. It is our understanding that excess bond monies can by law only be spent on those projects that are similar to what was included in the bond package language approved by the voters in 2008. That included the school building construction and renovations, and improvements for an early childhood center, classroom additions, auditoriums, and other improvements to school buildings and facilities, science and technology programming and equipment, and according to Proposition 3, the basically the development of a performing arts center in AIST that would serve the students. In 2008, the concept of an in-district IDEA charter school did not exist. As a matter of fact, there was no language, no conversation, no community input regarding the creation of an in-district charter or the expenditure of funds on an in-district charter. We are sure that in 2008, there were lots of projects, many projects, that should have and could have been included in the bond package listing of projects, but that did not necessarily make the cut. We are now in 2012. I'm sure that there are other projects to improve our school facility, our physical plants, programming and equipment, technology improvements that can be highlighted for spending these excess tax dollars on or bond money dollars on. We ask that you do not consider spending that $5.4 or any of that money, the $500,000, $430,000, I think that you have allotted to go to IDEA. We ask that you please exercise your responsibilities as stewards of our taxpaying dollars and consider that we are a public school, this is a public school district supported by taxpayer dollars, and that we do not want our money going towards privatizing education in AIST. Thank you.
Thank you. Geneva Oliva, Vincent Tovar, and Megan Buchanan.
Good evening. I am Geneva Oliva. I'm with LULAC District 7. I'm the district deputy director for the youth, and tonight I'm here to demand that you do not put any 2008 bond monies into the IDEA charter school. IDEA wasn't part of the plan in 2008, so we as voters have the right to tell you where and how to spend this money. There are lots of things that our students and schools need, especially schools that have been waiting since 2008 or before, then to get renovated or upgraded in technology. Our youth, who are our future, could use laptops, iPods, and so on. I want you to think about this bond election. It was the people from your community and all of Austin that voted for this bond, and it should be us, the Austin voters, who you need to satisfy. It is hard for me to believe that just last year, here we were fighting to keep you from closing 10 schools and letting go of excellent teachers. Now we're here to decide how you are going to spend all this money. Something is wrong with this picture. It is time to turn the channel to the real thing, because you just became the talk of other districts. I suggest that you get straightened up, because our eyes are on you and we are getting ready for elections. This bond committee that you appointed is supposed to ensure that the bond program is implemented appropriately with the use of permanent management strategies and controls, and that the bond funds are spent properly and only on voters-approved projects. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Vincent Tovar, Megan Buchanan, and Jose Quintero.
My name is Vincent Tovar. I'm a Go Valley dad and Go Valley PTA's treasurer. I'm also representative of Pride of the East Side, a group of parents, community members, AIST staff, dedicated to supporting East Austin schools, especially East Austin Memorial High School vertical team and its students. We honor the history of the name that East Austin leaders in the community, like Ms. Oliva, who coined it and have used it, and we honor her work and East Austin leaders' work historically. And you can find us at PrideOfTheEastSide.org. And I say all this because both district employees and the media have painted me and our group as protesters, charter foes, or boycott IDEA, and that's not the complete picture. So throughout the past few months, parents, including myself, were confused, and every day we continued to hear confusing bits of information. It wasn't even announced until this morning that we would be able to speak at tonight's meeting, and that was after we called as late as last Wednesday to find out. So again, parents incredibly upset about their retrofitting $430,000, couldn't make it tonight on such short notice, but they'll be asking us tomorrow for the complete picture, the whole story, the complete picture. So of course, we're against any recommendation of using 2008 bond money to retrofit an in-district charter school when the 2008 bond proposal never mentioned funding an in-district charter school, never. So the confusion continues. When you go to AIST's website, which is the most difficult website I've ever tried to navigate, when you go to the website to see the 2008 bond status update, you'll see the word "complete" next to "bond projects." But I think we should make sure the schools' CAC, the individual school's CACs approve their completion. And if you have leftover money after all that, how about doors on bathroom stalls in Austin schools? How about solving the rat infestations at certain schools and making sure that bathroom sinks don't flood counters and floors? This isn't flooding because the janitor had just cleaned it. Let's work together to complete projects and give the complete pictures. Thank you, and happy School Board Appreciation Month.
Thank you, sir. Megan Buchanan, Jose Quintero, Jonathan Cronin.
Hello. I am also here as a member of Pride of the East Side, but I'm also representing East Austin Fine Arts Department. Part of the 2004 and 2008 bond includes renovating the East Austin Memorial High School Performing Arts Center, or ANX, along with many other parts of our building. In the PAC, the renovations were started two years ago, and we now have a state-of-the-art sound system, 48 digital channels. It's really awesome to work with, especially as a choir teacher. I really love letting my students sing with wireless microphones like Britney Spears. And that is this picture. Right next to this digital work of art is our analog 1980s lighting board that they don't even create, they don't even reprint the manual for anymore. So none of us know how to use it, but we've kind of played with it enough. Some very patient students have figured out how to use this. And then down below the lighting room are the seats that there's a couple of rows blocked off, because they've come unbolted, and so if you sit in the chairs, they fall forward. So that gives me the impression that the renovation of our PAC is incomplete, and I think, actually, I think all these chairs are the same ones that were put in when the building was built in the 90s. Lately, we've had a lot of administrative support and encouragement around recruiting students to attend East Austin Memorial. So if I were an eighth grader coming to a recruitment presentation at our Performing Arts Center, and I sat next to or in front of or behind a seat with caution tape on it and watched the room go dark because the ancient lighting system is unreliable, it wouldn't matter how crisp and clear the sound was, I would remember a rundown building with old, broken chairs and no lights. When we bring eighth graders, who we want to recruit, we have to show them very strategic parts of our building. New Tech Wings, where Green and Global used to be housed, have innovation stations, they're green buildings with the lighting that is sensitive to people walking around. They're really impressive. So we love to show off those buildings, but if you walk two classrooms down, you have sinks that don't work, ceilings that leak, doors that won't open. And our cafeteria, lastly, our cafeteria has a lot of... And our cafeteria, lastly, our cafeteria has a lot of Ram Pride posters, and the chairs and tables still say Ram Pride. So when we're starting to try and re-author a culture at our school, it's really giving a mixed message when they, we're trying to instill Panther Pride, and they keep seeing Rams everywhere. So I would just encourage you, when you're discussing what to use leftover bond money, to consider finishing projects like this all over the district that are already started. Thank you.
Thank you. Jose Quintero, Jonathan Cronin, and Angelica Noriola.
Good evening, board members. My name is Jose Quintero. I'm with the Greater East Austin Neighborhood Association. I just want to make a little comment. He that has an ear, let him hear. I am come to you to ask why are you so eager to give away $430,000 of taxpayers' money to a company this community didn't want? And 2008 bond election monies were approved for the usage on existing schools to build a new school, not to be handed away to a company voters knew nothing about in 2008. Now, this is 2008, they didn't know about it. You cannot expect voters to approve future bonds if you give that away to users not approved by the taxpayers. It's always the taxpayers you need to consider. This board has done a disservice to the East Austin community by approving the IDEA. Do not pour salt into the wound by giving our tax dollars to a company who was not invited by us into our community. And I want to thank you for giving the opportunity for me to speak. This does, it's not, it's very surprising to me. It's the first time I come to this board. I've been going to city council for years, and they've shut their ears off to our community. They raised our taxes 200% in a poor neighborhood. So I am really surprised that you people did not listen to the, to the voters that approved you here to come to represent us. That's taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jonathan Cronin, Angelica Noriola, and Mike Corwin.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jonathan Cronin. I'm a 2001 graduate of the Liberal Arts Academy at Johnston High School, and I'm here to speak about the 2008 bond allocation and utilization issues. As a product of a middle-class upbringing in Central Austin Side Park, during my time at Johnston, I began to realize in that time period how people in the community felt that the district treated that school and all the schools on the east side of town. And I'm here to speak to those issues and give voice to those concerns. I encourage that the school district follow through on its obligations and commitments to all students, faculty, and taxpayers, and fulfill its commitments on the 2008 bond issues and fully repair all outstanding issues at Johnston High School, now known as East Side Memorial. And I trust that the district will follow through on its obligations and commitments to taxpayers, students, and teachers alike. They deserve nothing less than first-class treatment and funding. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Angelica Noriola, Mike Corwin.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. Remember, no taxation without representation from our history books. Colonists of 13 original colonies in the 1750s and 1760s demanded that they be included in the decisions that affected them, especially since they were paying taxes to the government. The battle cry led to the American Revolution that eventually established the United States of America. Well, what about us? What about the taxpayers, citizens, parents, and students of East Austin schools? We were left out of the decisions that will so radically change the way our children are educated in the future. School boards and superintendents will come and go, while we will suffer the consequences of the last decisions made by the Austin ISD, knowing we opposed IDEA. Bond money was meant to be allotted for existing schools and a new school, not to support an experiment called IDEA at Allen. There are numerous schools that are listed as pending priority ones, repairs, so fix our existing problems with the surplus bond money before you start giving away our tax dollars for experiments that we never asked for. Again, we ask to be heard. We want to be part of the process, much as our brave founding fathers demanded, not just for themselves, but for our generations of Americans to come. We are among those future generations they were fighting for, and we should do no less than demand inclusion and participation in any taxpayer-funded governmental process that affects us. That is why we, the parents and taxpayers of Austin, are not going away. We demand to be heard. After all, they are our kids, they are our schools, and it is our money.
Thank you. And Mike Corwin.
Hi, my name is Mike Corwin. I'm a parent of a kindergartner in an AISD school who just entered in this last fall. We're having a great time. I'm here to speak about the bond issue tonight. Now, I have to say that I wasn't as invested or involved in following as closely the bond issue in 2008. But I began to get more invested and interested in what was going on in this district this time last year. That was, on the one hand, because I knew my child was going to be entering AISD this last fall, but also because at the time of the threat of closure of 15 of our schools. And as I understood it, that threat was on the basis of the incredible maintenance and upkeep costs of the schools that at the time, I know this has been withdrawn at this point, but what came out of that discussion is that these schools face huge, tremendous challenges in terms of resources and maintenance and upkeep and so on and so forth. And it was striking to me at the time that that these, those schools were put under the chopping block, even regardless of their academic performance and so on and so forth. I got more interested, involved, invested in what was going on in AISD this fall when I saw what took place in this room last month with the imposition of IDEA schools over the, I think, you know, over the unanimous objections from the community. And so what I want to say about this is that, number one, it doesn't make sense to divert any funds away from the, what we know are critical, tremendous critical infrastructure needs. But on another level, having seen what went down here last month, I feel like we were told again and again and again that our schools weren't performing well, and that IDEA had some special formula for success. And what I'm seeing here is not a level playing field when we're actually judging the success of traditional public schools versus IDEA, where, you know, our traditional public schools have to sprint for resources, and Tom Torkelson comes up and says, "I want eight brand-new, you know, classrooms," and he's granted it just like that. It doesn't seem like a level playing field. So in conclusion, I want to say, this board, or I should say, the leadership has lost a lot of trust with the public right now. I think you can do a little bit to help regain that trust by not lavishing these funds on IDEA schools. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes, I believe, the citizens' communication and public hearing portion of our meeting. Let's now turn to this particular agenda item. And Dr. Starfen, if you have a kickoff on it or not. Certainly listed as, Mr. Friar is the presenter.
Mr. President, trustees of the board, it's as the agenda item states that the, we're recommending that the board approve the proposed uses of surplus 2008 bond contingency funds for renovation projects as specifically outlined in Attachment 1, and facilities improvements associated with the approved AAFRs for the 2012-13 school year as specifically identified in Attachment 2.
And so just, because we're not actually giving it somewhere, I just want to recap, I think, the critical renovations is 10.7 million, you alluded to that, and
Of the 19.
Of the, of the, 16, of the 16 something.
16, excuse me.
And HVAC is 3.7 million of that, roofing's 4.1, electrical's 1.1, I'm rounding, elevators 150,000, flooring 55,000, and plumbing is 1.4 million dollars, scattered at a number of campuses across our district. And some of the plumbing is actually at several of the schools that have been discussed tonight. Then there is 5.3 million associated with the annual academic and facility recommendations, of which 4.1 is associated with north-central overcrowding, 400,000 to, at Allen and East Side Memorial for the facility, not program spending, I guess, but for the facility, and then 380,000 to deal with Lanier and Travis, and then 420,000 for various, dealing with the Academic Education Learning Support Center. So that makes up the 5.3 million dollars. And I think you also have included in our packet tonight that we do have a legal opinion from outside bond counsel indicating that that specific set of spending is authorized and appropriate within the bond covenants that have been established pursuant to the voters' approval in 2008. So let's open it up for a motion, or comments, or questions. Ms. Lavoy.
I move that we approve the proposal this evening with the addition of $430,040 for Go Valley and the same amount, $430,040 for Ortega, to cover the necessary renovations at these two schools, which are due to receive students from the, who do not choose to attend the charter school. We've heard from many parents, and so I want to respond to that need. And I recommend that the balance of the appropriations be reduced proportionally. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Williams, I'll second that motion. One of the things I've noted about the IDEA proposal is that there's been essentially no public support for it. And if that is correct, I expect both Ortega and Go Valley will receive a large number of people that will apply to go there. So I think this is a fitting way to spend the money.
Okay, thank you. As the makers of the motion and the second, can you please provide some detail about what, how that money would be spent, please?
To, thank you, Mr. President. I would recommend that out of the proposed use of bond proceeds, we earmark the same amount that's earmarked for the IDEA schools for the two schools likely to receive students who do not choose to go to the IDEA schools. Those two schools are Go Valley and Ortega. I propose that we match the amount that the superintendent has proposed for IDEA with $430,040 for Go Valley, $430,040 for Ortega, and that the balance of the proposals, the balance, which is $10 million, be reduced proportionally across the other campuses to account for this funding. Thank you.
Okay, let's open up for comments or questions. Mr. Guzman.
Well, I like the motion, because obviously it, it helps all the schools, or the three schools that were mentioned are in my district. But, but, but I'd like to know if we reduce, how much it would reduce, for example, at Mendis, who is also in my district, which is designated to receive funding for repair, the cooling tower, replace condensing water pumps, replace condenser pipeline, how much it would reduce another item at Mendis to replace heat pumps in kitchen and small gym, how much it would reduce another item at Mendis to add DX unit to MDF and supplemental cooling, how much it would reduce another item at Mendis to replace the water source, single-package heat pumps, and the theater. And then further, how much it would reduce another item at Allen to replace the electric branch panel, and another item in Savala to replace the ceramic floor tile damaged. And then at East Side Memorial, sanitary waste pipes under the kitchen that are leaking, another item at East Side Memorial for the kitchen domestic water distribution lines under the kitchen that are leaking, at Ellison, to replace sanitary sewer lines from the building to the city tap. At Savala, again, plumbing fixtures that are beyond useful life. At Go Valley, plumbing fixtures in all restrooms that are beyond useful life. At Langford, water pressure regulating valve is missing and has to be replaced. And I think I've touched on the, oh, yeah, I've touched on the, on mine, okay? And obviously, there's others in other, in the districts of other trustees. And so I'm concerned about how much it would reduce the amounts in those, those particular schools if we, if we did this, this motion.
Thank you. Well, I think we'll come back to Ms. Moya.
Thank you. Dr. Karstarfen or Mr. Friar, since there weren't any additional projects at, at Go Valley on the list, could you, could you all prepare for another time to give us an idea of what kind of projects are still outstanding or need to be done at those campuses? And perhaps we could do, maybe do an amendment or something to this particular, this particular action at a future date in order to allocate a specific amount of money for specific projects for those campuses, rather than just, just assign a dollar amount and not knowing exactly what needs to be done or what, what, what we need to take care of at those campuses?
No, I've got it. Thank you. You don't have to yell across the room. Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Moya, we can do whatever the board directs us to do. But just to remind you about the way the process works, I just direct everyone's attention in the agenda item to the background. You have a CBOC, that's a Community Bond Oversight Committee, that looks at all of our facilities, that has a process, that looks at all of the work. When we were planning AAFRs and, and the impacts to schools, they looked at all of this information and made a pretty comprehensive list of recommendations to the board and the community. The, the co-chairs of that, of that CBOC actually worked to prioritize the list, and so we have a pretty stringent process. They were aware of all the variables in the AAFRs throughout the entire presentation of every AFR with the budget, the facilities, and the contingency impact was listed every time. And, and we worked closely with the CBOC to be aware of anything else that was on the table. So we, we know that, you know, there are definitely students that'll be moving to other schools. But as a reminder, the schools where students are moving to are under-enrolled, we have space for kids, we have all, you know, we're working through our implementation plans, and there wasn't an indication that this was needed. However, we can go back, go one more time, talk to the CBOC, and, 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 and work with them to make another recommendation at another time at those specific schools if they're needed. But as it relates to actually reducing from the existing list, we would not recommend that, because you've had people working on these details, working on the cost of plumbing, and lots of other infrastructure things that I don't think we can negotiate at the table tonight. But if you want to add more to take away from contingency, we can work on that. But I should bring it back to the CBOC, send people back out again to double-check if that's your desire. But as it stands tonight, I would, I would definitely recommend that you don't use a strategy of reducing from other schools. I think we don't have enough information here, and we don't have the people that you actually have working for you, year in and year out, your Citizens Bond Oversight Committee looking at this, and they have made a recommendation. So I would start there and then add on later, should you desire, but not take away.
Ms. Moya has a follow-up, and then I'll come back.
Okay, well, then I would be interested in, in finding out from the CBOC what projects in their, if there are any projects on the, on the pending lists of the, of the bonds or any work that's left out that we need to, that we should consider. Obviously, they've looked at everything that we have left and done some prioritization. So I'd just be interested to see what, what there is that's been identified for Go Valley and Ortega that's not already here that might need to be addressed. And so, so I don't, Ms. Lavoy, if you and Mr. Schneider would consider a, a follow-up or a friendly amendment that we wait until we have a recommendation from the CBOC for specific projects at those particular schools to, to do an allocation from, from the bond, 2008 bond contingency funds.
Thank you for the suggestion. I think it's important to proceed with the motion as made.
Okay, Ms. Bradley had her hand up a second ago, and Mr. Guzman as well.
Okay, I have to say that actually I like Ms. Lavoy's motion as well. But I do have to ask this question, because I guess my, my question is, what are we doing? Or what is the plan to receive the additional students? Because we know we're going, each school will receive additional precayers, and they will receive, is that a yes, or that's a no?
Mr. President, trustees of the board, the pre-K students are staying at Allen, so we're not moving the Allen piece, but we, but for north-central overcrowding, we are. So in the in the piece for Allen, pre-K stays at the building in 1213, and then we're going to see how things work out, and we might make a different recommendation for 1314. So that was, I think that answers your first question.
It does, because I was under the impression, especially listening to some community folk, that pre-K, or at least maybe they feel that pre-K, will be moving to Go Valley and Ortega. So if that's incorrect, then maybe we need to make sure that we get that message out there so that it is clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I was under that perception as well. Because I was wondering, as we looked at both schools, and I did visit Ortega, I was invited out there for board appreciation, and I could not see how they could hold additional precares. Then even as we look at additional, the fourth and fifth graders, right, right grade? Third, fourth, and fifth, or fourth and fifth, right? Three, four, and five, okay. How we're going to, where are we going to house those additional students? So I guess what I would like to hear is, what is the plan for those two schools, for those receiving schools? What do we, what do we plan as far as the additional space, the additional students, resources, the whole nine yards?
Ready? Mr. President, trustees of the board, trustee Bradley, every last one, so the question you just asked is what we're doing for North Central overcrowding, for DAEP, and all the programs. So the...
No, 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 no. My focus is only on two schools, and that's Go Valley and Ortega, just those two schools.
Right. So in the same way that we're working with all the AFRs, we are going through each implementation plan, working directly with the principals, the head of their custodial staff, our operations people, and not only for academic planning and everything else, there's a ton of logistics, even down to transportation. So all of those plans are being worked through as we stand because we just approved them and wanted to be sure that things were approved before we started moving on actions. And those plans are being put together. And so everyone's working literally every day to make sure that those details are documented, and we know exactly what we're doing as we, you know, go through the fall in the school year, and what has to be done in the summer to be able to sure everything launches off without a hitch in the fall. So you will see a plan for everything, including those schools. And so we have all those things in progress, and we're pulling them together. And we are creating even, you know, a frequently asked question sheet and some other things that we've already shared with many parents. We're sending information home. Some of the people even spoke tonight, got direct emails from me with some of this information. But we want to be sure that we lay all of it out in a coherent way, and that's exactly what we're doing, as we discussed when we approved the AFRs. So we're on our timeline, but all the plans aren't put, you know, aren't written out just yet. But you will have one for Go Valley, Ortega, and Allen as well.
Okay, so that would, so as we go along and we're noticing deficiencies, we're going to have an answer for everything, and if there's money tied to any of this, we'll know all of that. That's what you're saying, right?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Just for clarification purposes, at least for me, what you were saying previously is that you would recommend that we move forward, but that we go back and look at those particular schools that were mentioned in the motion, and see what it is that they're going to need, and then come back and determine the amount of funds that they would need to do whatever it is that we will need to be able to accommodate the changes and the students that will be enrolling there that would not enroll in IDEA, and that we would still have some contingency funds available for that purpose?
Mr. President, trustee board, trustee Guzman, you would have funds left over, and we would have to go back to the CBOC. We'd have to get another letter. I mean, we'd have to do all the steps that we did to get through here today. But we could indeed bring that forward.
Mr. Torres.
Mr. Williams, I think I'm going to follow up a little bit on what I think I understood Mr. Guzman suggest, and Dr. Karstharfen. I could support a motion that had an allocation up to an amount of, the equal amount for Allen. If we looked at what the needs of those campuses, those two campuses, Ortega and Go Valley, of what the needs of those campuses might be as a result of, any impact as a result of the IDEA plan. But I cannot support this motion by reducing the cost to any other campuses. I think that's not the way we make our campuses better. I think looking at how a campus might be impacted and allocating money to address those needs is certainly appropriate, and I can support that. But I can't support the motion the way it's currently stated.
Ms. Bradley. Oh, Ms. Brister, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Bradley and Ms. Brister.
Well, let me clarify something because I have to agree with Mr. Torres. By no means am I saying reduce the amount of money for any other campus, because I think you all know that's not what I stand for. I do not believe that you take away from one campus to give to another, because when you do that, you're creating an inequity regardless. So that much I do not support. What I'm saying is this, we know that we're going, and let me start off, Ortega's not District Two, it's District One. We know that we have two campuses that are going to be receiving students. So we already know that now. So in my opinion, now, we should know exactly what is going to be needed, or somewhat, some of the things that are going to be needed for those campuses, or what the plans are for those campuses to have the resources that they will need. So, and I'm not sure if I'm articulating this well, but I do have a problem voting on this, not knowing whether those campuses are going to have what they need to meet the incoming students. So I would like to see a plan now, and if you don't have a plan now, I understand that. But I would like to see something now. So I have to apologize to you because I did not articulate that beforehand. So I understand why there's not one now, because I didn't say that to you previously. But it's difficult for me to vote on something not knowing whether Go Valley and Ortega are going to have the resources they need to meet the students that they are sure to get, and we know that.
Dr. Karstharfen.
Mr. President, trustee board, trustee Bradley, I was just going to, I was going to say, like, what we would anticipate is that we need to go through the enrollment process, the selection, the choice process that families exercise. And so in the, certainly in the timeline work that we're doing already, we know that, you know, there's a first touch point at the end of January, there's another touch point at the end of February, and especially with the sixth grade, we'll be able to see where people choose to go, and that will help us as the middle schools are doing their choice sheets. So that's kind of at the end of February as well. So our kind of real check-in on what we really will need around any of the details in a plan starts after the end of February. But it still gives us, which is just, you know, I know most of the things that happen is at the end of the school year, and we're trying to implement for the next one. But we'll have plenty of time to be able to bring, you know, bring things back, to talk about as we start figuring things out. So as we see those touch points happen, we can make the numbers tighter and tighter. So you're right, we anticipate some, but which grade levels, how many, and which of the two schools will totally, you know, depend on what parents decide. And so we're right, you know how that is here. I mean, we're right in the middle of that timeframe that gets wrapped up sort of by the end of February, enough to give us a comfortable guidance about what we need to do next.
Okay, and this is just the world according to me. I don't particularly feel this is something that we bring back and forth to the CBOC, because we know we're going to have the need. So I believe this is something that is administrative, and it's dealt that way.
Just to be clear, just from Mr. President, trustee board, trustee Bradley, just to be clear, if we're using bond money, I have to go back to the CBOC and make sure, because we only, we have a letter about what we proposed. So if I, you know, so if we do something else, we got to make sure they have a very tight process. I think that gentleman was here. So unless we are proposing that we take it out of operating funds or something, but what I can do right away is go back, you know, and say, this is on the table, here's our general estimate, like, you know, if everybody went, what does it mean if 50% went, and get some targets and have some things set up to go. So ideally, because this is our January meeting, and I think there's one other touch point in February, we would try to get things set up, because you want action sooner rather than later. And, you know, we want to try to get that on the board for action, no later than your February regular meeting. So I can bring those things back to them as soon as we finish this meeting and get everybody working double time.
Ms. Brister.
I just wanted to make sure I understood earlier in the conversation, you said you had to take everything back, go back to the CBOC and the letter. Were you referring to this letter that stated January 13th that's in our book?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know that this letter, wasn't this generated based on everything that we were, there's already the plan? So would we find ourselves crossways with anything if we were to, I'm not saying that we should not consider Ms. Lavoy's motion, but if we were to add that tonight, would we find, because there's not a plan for Go Valley or Ortega right now. We don't know what those projects are.
Right. Mr. President, trustee of the board, trustee Brister, to be sure that we have dotted every i and crossed every t, and that we don't get sideways with our bond council, this is what I'm talking about. So we don't have, we did not have them vet that. We don't just get to use it for anything. We don't just get to come up with numbers out of the blue. We turn all that over to them, they analyze it, they look at it, and they say yes or no, based on those details. And they do look at every single thing. That has, we, there's nothing here on the table around those two schools, other than what's outlined, you know, here in Attachment, is Attachment One, Attachment One. And so I would need to go back and present all these things again, and be sure that the bond council has yet another chance to look at that and keep us all legally within the bounds that we're supposed to be in. So while I don't think it's impossible, that's what I'm saying, like, we can leave here, and Lawrence and others tomorrow will get started right away. I just think it's not, it's, at least the administration is not recommending that the board go outside of its legal process and put this in tonight, no matter what, whether you're taking it away or adding it right now. I would not recommend that. But you are the board, you have, you know, you can decide what you want to do. And, but what my commitment could be, if you choose to follow the process outlined by the CBOC and getting the advice from our attorneys for our, you know, to be sure our bond council is giving us the clear that we can do these things, no matter what it is. Those are things that I can go back and take, start working on in preparation for the next available time that we have, all the information that we need, and can give you a chance to take action at the earliest meeting possible, with real numbers, not, you know, we won't be able to make up numbers and just say, because they got this, we're doing that. You know, everybody's got plumbing problems, too. We can't just spend $100,000 for everybody. So that's something I'd have to take to them and really justify where we're spending the money to make changes and improvements on the facility. So, but we can pull all that together and have them vet it and bring back a proposal to y'all for action as soon as possible.
Okay. Ms. Lavoy.
Questions about the numbers. Can, and I have three questions I'd like to ask in sequence. Can you point us to the place in the documents where there's funding to modify Eastside Memorial for sixth through 12th grades?
It's Attachment Two?
And where does it appear on that document?
The line is under, it's the second section down. It says North Central, then it says College Prep, Graduates and Pathways in Alternative.
I'm looking for the Eastside number. Does the $430,000 earmark for IDEA include changes to both Allen and Eastside?
Yes, ma'am. It would be Allen and Eastside Memorial, because in short order thereafter, the sixth grade and the rising seventh grade go onto that campus.
And is the plan still in effect to make Eastside part of the IDEA program?
Yes, ma'am. That is what the board approved.
Okay. And implementation is proceeding on that basis?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then can you specify what alternative education, which campuses will be affected by the $420,000 for alternative education?
Lanier High School and Travis High School.
I'm sorry, they appear above in the graduation pathways. I'm asking about the final item. I'm asking about the final item.
Okay.
What campuses are affected with alternative education, $420,000?
That would be all secondary schools. I mean, it's all secondary high schools.
All right.
It's our high schools.
All right. And finally, what is the total amount in our documents for Allen Elementary School, including the $430,000 earmarked for IDEA and other improvements? What is the total amount of money that will be spent at Allen under this proposal?
I think it's $430 plus the electrical branch panels, but I can't, is it 12 under electrical?
$69,000.
So the building has the $430 plus the $237 for the replacement of the electrical branch panels.
And so can you give a figure to the public on the total that will be spent at Allen Elementary School under your proposal?
Can somebody do the math for me?
Yeah, you need to split out of the $430, how much of that's Eastside Memorial versus Allen?
I do not. Do you have the details on what's...
Excuse me, that's not the question. The question is, how much, I think the public wants to know, how much money is going to be spent on Allen Elementary School next year? What is the total figure?
I realize that wasn't the question, but they're trying to get you the answer. So I think it's splitting the $430 between Allen and Eastside, plus the $69,000 for the electrical.
I don't believe that's right, Mr. President. There are three items in our documents for Allen, and I'm looking for the total.
So if you, if you can, just because there's a lot of papers, which three are you looking at? I just want to be sure. I know what you're looking at. I do remember the electrical panels.
I'll read what I believe the total figures are, and I'd like you, Superintendent, to repeat the total and do the math for us. The superintendent has proposed three expenditures for Allen Elementary School next year, $430,040 for the IDEA charter schools, $69,466 for lighting, $237,941 for electrical. And what's the grand total of those?
Sorry, I don't have a calculator in front of me, so if somebody could do that math, the electrical...
It's on page three or four of Attachment One.
Do you have it marked?
I'm getting it.
Just, no, Mark's doing it.
This assumption you're making is that all the $430 is attributable to Allen, and that's what I guess I was trying to get a split on.
Do you have the number for just the Allen part? Can you just give me the number? $333, Mark is the number you want to use.
$333,000 of the $430?
Yep. Of the $430. So it's $333 plus the 27...
$330,000, is that what you said?
$333,000.
$333, sorry.
Plus the 237,941.
Roughly, it's $641,000.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you for doing the math. So the grand total of money that will be spent to implement the IDEA campuses on the Eastside next year is $700,000. next year is $737,447?
The total number to implement improvements to the facilities of schools, including Allen, which will have a program called IDEA in it. But for our facility improvements, you've got two numbers that have nothing to do with IDEA. It's the 237,941 plus the 69,466. So no matter who goes in that building, those are things that you want to do to keep your facilities at a high quality level. The difference, the $333,000 that Mr. Williams and others, thank you for doing that part, is about ensuring that we make the changes inside the building to be able to receive the numbers of students that would come into the program for the design that it is. But that is making sure that we have the right spaces because we have a lot of administrative offices in the building largely because the school is under-enrolled and we've been using the extra space for adults and that that space is not child-friendly right now. So we will be making those changes and doing those things with those dollars and preparing the high school for the sixth grade and the rising seventh graders in the 13, 14 school year.
Okay. Other question, Ms. Schneider.
Dr. Kraschafen, my understanding of what you just said was we're spending about a third of a million dollars for retrofitting Allen to be a campus for IDEA. And they intended to use it as a place for their elementary ed, is that correct?
Mr. President, trustee of the board, trustee Schneider's. It is a place for our AISD school with our kids, yes.
But they're doing elementary ed there, is that right?
Yes, sir, they're doing K through, I'm sorry, pre-K, K1, 2, and 6 at Allen at the start of the 12, 13 school year.
Okay, which is what we're doing now there as well.
We're doing that plus a 3, 4, 5 grades.
Okay, and, excuse me, the administrative?
And we're not doing sixth grade right there, there now.
Plus the administrative facilities?
Yes, we have administrators over there. We have some of our departments over there.
Okay, and the campuses itself was originally a middle school or designed for a middle school?
Yes, sir, it was.
And about half of it is being actually used as a school facility, is that correct?
That's about accurate, yes.
How do we know that we need to do this amount of retrofitting? I mean, what kind of numbers tell us that we need to be spending this amount of money there to do the changes that are being proposed?
Well, we know because of the, there are a couple of things that we look at. Everything from grade levels to the projection for the enrollment. We know what we have over there for adult, for the adult facility space. I've personally walked it multiple times to get a sense of what it would take. We're actually going to try in some respects to phase out some of the departments. You know, if at all possible, you know, we want to reduce as much, I mean, to use the space and transition over time. But, but pretty much, those are the things that we look at. Those things come at a projected cost that we see all the time when we renovate buildings. We put those numbers to it and get the estimate for the improvements. And those are things that our facility office does. And as you can see, there are lots of other numbers around how much things cost. Everything from plumbing to painting in the other recommendations. And so those are the things that, some of the things that we consider as well.
Okay, but I still don't have a sense as to how we're getting to a projected number of students.
Mr. President, trustee of the board, trustee Schneider, we can provide all those details for this and all of the other projects if you also desire.
Okay, I would appreciate seeing that information, so.
We will, we will do that.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Guzman?
I'm considering adding to the recommendation the following, and I might want to ask the general counsel to maybe word it, but it would be along these lines. Given the recommendation and then add, and that the needs of Ortega and Go Valley are reviewed and determined and that appropriate funds be applied once that occurs, contingent upon proper review and clearance by bond counsel as required.
Okay, Mr. Guzman, I actually support your direction. That's actually where I want to go, but we have a motion on the table.
I'm not making a motion. I'm just, that's just part of the discussion that I would, I would want to add to the recommendation being made as part of the administration.
Yeah, so, because I, me, I'm going to, I appreciate the concept. To me, that's the direction I'd like to go. I don't support the motion as proposed. One is I don't want proportional reduction to all the projects that have already been pretty precisely figured out the cost. Second, I do think we need additional due diligence before we put a number. I mean, it's nice to put a symbolic number there, but I need to know, I'd like to know what the number is. And I think we need to go through the process and make sure our bond counsel and all that, just to protect ourselves from a fiduciary standpoint. And I think what you described is kind of where I would be comfortable going because I think it would get us to approve the projects as proposed, the things that are high priority, and let us come back and address those once we have the information we need. And I think there's an indication of support for that, at least for me to do that. I think there's many others on the board.
Well, then.
But we got to take action on the motion as proposed.
Therefore, if it's appropriate, I'd like.
Okay, so let's, we got to, let's address the question. We have a motion and a second already related to, so why don't you restate your motion, Ms. Lavoy, please?
I have a question before we stating the motion. Are there excess bond funds available now? In other words, we've seen documents over the last couple of months that I believe pointed to 18 or 19 million dollars in surplus bond funds. And so I'd like to know the amount of surplus bond funds available tonight.
So if you take the 19.4 minus the, is the total of, what's my total, 10? Well, it's, I mean, just to be clear, what is the bottom line bucket? It's 19.4, right? Okay, so, and how, and so for user purposes right now, right? We can subtract what's here from that and the difference is what's left over, correct? Okay.
It's roughly 3.3 million dollars.
Thank you, that's what I was going to say. So those are the buckets and the difference is we have about 3.3 left.
Okay, so we have, we have questions. So would you please state the motion?
I'm considering amending my own motion, and I don't know what the parliamentary procedure is for that.
You can withdraw the motion and then we have a different motion if your second will agree to the withdrawal.
And I can immediately make the second motion.
We'll let you give a shot at it.
Are you comfortable with that, seconder? Thank you.
Okay, so that motion off the table.
All right, I'll withdraw the motion and I'll modify it to state that we proceed with the approving the expenditures from bond contingency excess as presented us, to us tonight and that we immediately proceed tomorrow to prepare accurate estimates for high-side student attendance at the districts in the campuses in Ms. Bradley's district and Mr. Guzman's district so that we know the high-side amount of expenditure that may be necessary to accommodate students and that we go ahead and approve, taking that funding out of contingency once the estimates are made and it comes back to us for final approval.
Is there a second?
I will second that. I would just like to ask that, my understanding is from Dr. Kraschafen that this is run through the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and that they review any proposals that are made regarding these two campuses.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion of that motion. Mr. Guzman?
In anybody's mind, does that, I understand the motion, does that vary any, in any way from the motion that was made by administration?
It's got a tag on it that it didn't have originally.
Can we tag on it and, as opposed to a brand new, which was my intention, to tag on it? Essentially, it's the same one that Ms. Lavoy is making, but it was, it was a tag on it.
So, Mr. Waxler, let's make sure, because I think the, even though Ms. Lavoy read her motion, there's a specific recommendation in the agenda item, which I think was the wording that we wanted to make sure that we use.
Correct.
Related, and I think that's Mr. Guzman's point, that we use that wording for purposes of the money that's been asked, recommended tonight for action by the board and then have the additional language that Ms. Lavoy said. But I think the way she voiced her motion didn't exactly reflect this language. I think your point's very well taken.
Right, at this point in time, of course, Ms. Lavoy has the motion on the floor. You would have to ask Ms. Lavoy whether or not it was identical, but in other words, to the administration's recommendation. I can't answer that question for you.
Okay, let's make sure we get the maker of the motion's intent. Ms. Lavoy, if you look at page one of our packet, was your motion the intent to make the first part of your motion to reflect what's actually been recommended by the administration and supported by the CBOC and then with the additional component related to staff starting to review on the additional campuses?
I wouldn't say it's identical, Mr. Guzman, I appreciate your question. We'll proceed in this manner. Would you like me to restate the motion?
Please.
Can I ask you a question, Ms. Lavoy?
Sure.
And see, see, because the motion here, recommendation specifically identifies the attachments. So it makes reference to the attachments. Your motion does not, and that was my concern, that the different dollar amounts and schools and so on are referenced in the attachment, and that was my concern.
Understood, I think that's a very good point. I'll craft something and we'll see if we can proceed. I move that the board approve the proposed uses of surplus 2008 bond program contingency funds for critical facility renovation projects as specifically identified in attachment one and facilities improvements associated with the approved annual academic and facilities recommendations for the 2012, 13 school year as specifically identified in attachment two and proceed immediately to conduct proper needs assessment to determine the high-side student enrollment costs associated with Ortega and Go Valley campuses for those students who do not wish to attend IDEA and wish to transfer to one of those campuses and that the high-side amount be earmarked out of contingency. If it is necessary to bring it back for final approval, that is understood. Thank you.
Somewhat of a little bit of replacement motion from what was stated earlier. So, Ms. Schneider, do you second that as effectively a replacement motion?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, discussion board. Ms. Bradley. Ms. Torres.
I'd like to add back in Mr. Schneider's qualification that the review be done by the CBOC and the bond counsel to ensure that it's appropriate use of bond funds.
So can we get that as an understood, that that would be the case? Would that be staff's interpretation, that that would be expectation? Okay, so that the bond counsel? Ms. Torres.
Adding in back in Mr. Schneider's qualification that the uses that are identified to be addressed with the allocation be for expenditures that are, one, approved by the CBOC, you know, that they be vetted back with the CBOC and that they be approved by the bond counsel as appropriate use of those funds.
Okay, Ms. Lavoy, wasn't part of your wording of the motion, but would that be your intent as well?
Can you repeat that, Mr. Torres?
May I summarize it?
Please.
That the expenditures that you've identified, that those expenditures be vetted with the CBOC to make sure that they are in agreement with the CBOC and that they be approved by the bond counsel as an appropriate use of bond funds.
I thought that was your intent, thanks. Thanks for restating it, and yes, that's acceptable.
Ms. Schneider, use a second of the motion, you're okay with that? Okay, Ms. Bradley.
Actually, I think my question may have been answered somewhere in there. I guess I'm having just, just a little bit of difficulty. And we're talking about elementary schools, so maybe we need to make this just a little bit more elementary for me. So, because I'm just having difficulty understanding. So as we're talking about the contingency fund, we're just basically talking about what would be facility renovations, just strictly facility renovations, okay? So what happens if the CBLC comes back and does not approve something? What's the contingency for that?
It's, Mel, it's the bond counsel, isn't that? I mean, the CBOC makes a recommendation, but isn't the bond counsel, that's your attorney?
Well, let's, let's be clear, as I, this is process-wise, I want to make sure we're clear. I don't think the CBOC kind of on their own is independently creating a recommendation. Staff is taking a recommendation to the bond oversight committee that then they review to make sure that they're, that they believe it's appropriate. And then we go to bond counsel, assuming the CBOC, to verify that it's actually legally eligible expenditures under the bond program. So the CBOC isn't making a recommendation, but they're going to make sure that it's consistent with the intent. Given that, my impression is, given that we've got $16 million of spending on a variety of things that they've already approved, I'd be highly surprised if they felt like that that expenditure was somehow not consistent with the intent of the bond program. And I would also be surprised if the bond counsel chose that, but you don't know for sure.
Right.
But I guess, you know, the question is what happens if they don't? And then we'd have to deal with that. But I'd be surprised, given their basically sign-off on what we already have seen, that if this is consistent with that love, that type of spending, that they would already, they wouldn't also support that.
That is accurately stated, and in accordance with Ms. Lavoy's motion, we would be coming back to the Board of Trustees.
I think we should, yeah. Does that address? Okay, and I, I'm going to make one other comment, which is I think there's a component to this which actually, at least for me, is also something we need to address because you teed it up when you said, these are facility expenditures. And when you talk about the high-side enrollment, there's going to be some programmatic and staffing impacts that may not be facility impacts. So that's why I was, one of the reasons I'm going to come up about putting a dollar number to the facility. But I do think we need to make sure we're appropriately staffing and putting the programmatic resources we need for the students that are there as well. So I think in the, and this is really from Dr. Kraschafen and Ms. Conley Abram, is we, part of the 2012 budgeting process, I know we need to, we need to make sure we're appropriately putting the level of operating expenditures we need there that may not be capital expenditures, which can really be limited to facilities, to make sure that we meet the needs of those campuses as well. And I know you're going to do that, but that's, but that's, but I think there may be some, back to your high-end staffing. Some of those costs, my guess, are going to be more operating expenditures that may not be eligible for capital treatment. And that's where I think we're going to have to look at both.
I understand the point. I just want to give these campuses what they need and not be engaged in a back and forth that causes parents distress and teachers distress, that there's not going to be enough space or the space is going to be substandard compared to Allen. I want to make sure that these two schools get what they deserve in this whole process.
I'm just making sure, because there'll be a facility need and then there'll be some operating need. And I guess I'm trying to say, let's make sure we do both. Ms. Bradley.
I appreciate that so much because I believe that's where I was trying to go and just not articulating it well, because I do know that there are going to be exactly what, exactly what you said. There is going to be that need. And my concern is, and as we talk about this, and I know I'm getting ready to say something that's going to make some people mad, and there's a lot of people out there that I respect. No, it's not okay. I'm going to, it's okay to make people mad or whatever, but anyway. Okay. As I sit back and I look at this, and I know we're all concerned about IDEA coming in and what have you, we're talking about IDEA as if they're going to be instructing children that are dropping out of the sky. But they're instructing our children in our community. These are our kids. So the monies that are going to Allen will be going to benefit our children. These will be AISD students. So of course, of course, I want them to have the very best as I would want all of our children in all of our schools to have the very best. So I do appreciate your comment, Mr. Williams, because I do have a concern with the students that we know will be going to Go Valley and going to Ortega. There's going to be an increase of students that will be going there because they will not be at Allen. So we are going to have to answer some questions as to how we're going to serve those other students, the other students, and I want to make sure that we have an answer for that. the other students. And I want to make sure that we have an answer for that. And it's just something I have not heard. So that's my concern.
And I'm, I'm with you, because I think we look at the ID students or our students, but everyone who's not going to be an IDEA, for whatever reason, will also be our students. And we have an obligation to all those students. You did say that. I'm just reiterating, because I love you said it. Thank you. Ms. Torres, Ms. Torres.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Dr. Kraschafen, can I perhaps talk to staff or whoever can clarify with, with me? I was very disturbed by at least the photograph that was shown with regard to the condition of the auditorium at Eastside. And I'm, I'd like to have someone address the current state of repairs at Eastside, whether or not there's an explanation for that, and if there isn't, I'd like to understand how soon that's going to get fixed.
The facility guy.
So, question is, if you all are prepared to address that tonight, or come back to us and let us know.
No, Mr. President, Trustees of the Board, you know, and Kurt, would you know off the top of your head, if not, we can look into it. But we have, as you all know, I mean, you, you've got your own schools. There are a lot of things that are underneath facility improvements when we start working on things and, and working with our contractors to get things done. But, and if you do not know the answer off the top of your head, I can provide it later. But I, I will check into the status of that. But just so everyone knows, you could walk in through any school in AISD, and we are constantly making improvements and fixing stuff, because things break all the time. So we'll check into that and get you an answer later.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion? My favorite motion, please raise your right hand. Passionated by the board members, thank you very much. And I forgot to mention Ms. Barstow is out of town tonight and was able to be here. Okay, thank you very much, staff. Thank you very much, community, for y'all coming out this evening on that issue. The board is going to now move to executive session. We'll be gone for, could be upwards of 75 minutes. That's what we're scheduled, could be more or less. And so that concludes the televised portion of our meeting, but we will return later this evening. Y'all are welcome to stay, or you can head out. So thank you very much. We are recessed at 7:38.